All right, seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll count the members present. I will have a quick word of prayer. This is more kind than prayer you said, Lord Father. We come to you thanking for you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us in our town. We just ask if you'd be with us tonight and we would make decisions that would be pleasing to you and we would honor you with our hearts and our minds. In great heaven, may we pray amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do you have all members here? Approval of the corrected minutes for the meeting in June?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have motion to second. Approved the corrected minutes from June. All those in favor receiving the motion, aye?
Aye.
Both stand approved. Before we move on to the financial statement, I did have in my notes, you will notice in there that we had a, I believe it was fifteen hundred dollar line item for Mr. Rick Maynard down on South Church Street. We were down there doing some work on the ditch there around the second bridge and we broke a water line and we fixed that water line. And he had it fixed. It happened on a Saturday night and we got it fixed and that's what that was about. Any questions? All right, moving on. Approval of financial statement for July.
I'm voting to approve the income statement for July.
Second. I have motion to second. Approved the financial statement for July. All those in favor receiving the motion, aye?
Aye.
Both stand approved. Reports of city departments. Fire department?
So far this year on our five hundred, we've had seven hundred and forty-four calls. Permits for this year have been seventy-three at this point. July had twelve permits to close out with, one of them being commercial. On August, we've had nine permits so far this month with one of them being commercial. Some eventually participated in August. It was a Hilltop funeral. We had a water day at Christian Academy. And some upcoming event, we have September seventeenth fair parade. So our training for August, we had normal Thursday night training where we focused on skills. And then we had a stop the lead class. And in September, we got inspector one and arson training coming up with also an advanced model.
All right, I want to brag on Jimmy and fire department have been doing a good job. Jimmy has really stepped up his playroom. As far as what he's been doing on building inspections, he's been a part of it. And he's took a lot of initiative and he's gotten a lot of the, he's just done some good work. He kind of got thrown into the fire. He really takes his job serious. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, time?
Thank you. Planning Commission met on seven twenty-five and we have a motion that will be presented later tonight. We will be again this month.
I do think there might be one potential business. I don't know if they've got everything together just on bypass. Is that your answer? And they? Thank you. Thank you. Police Department?
We finally got our eight hundred system up and running. You remember that was a brand we got up a few years ago. Eighty longer than that, I don't know. It's been a while. But they finally got it in Parker County Monday up and going. And we're back forty bucks or something like that. So a long process, but glad to be able to.
I don't know, you're proud to have the system.
Yeah. We got a good talk.
That's important.
Yep.
Are any questions, Chief? All right. Sewer Department?
One thing I want to mention is we, I'm sure you know, Mayor. We had a little problem with requiring hollow.
No, not me like that.
And they attributed the problem to a power spike. It knocked out two pumps. Burned them up, I guess.
That is great.
And Brandon was able to put a spare pump that we had in there, obviously to keep the gray water, let me call it that, gray water flowing. We do, he did order two new pumps. They will be here Friday and they will start that process of replacing those pumps on Friday.
And I want to brag on those two young men. They worked some long hours Saturday night and Sunday. They were very conscious. I had a conference call that ADQ today on other issues. They're very complimentary of how the sewer department's being ran. And that came from them, not from me. And it kind of made my heart swell to cry hearing regulators talk about how great the system is. Also, they're working on the Bernard Street, what I call the Highway one oh seven list station. We've had a lot of issues with concrete and stuff on that. I hope we're getting to the end of that. Like I said, those boys, it really pained me to see the conditions they were having to work in Saturday night and Sunday. And it was conditions that nobody else would want to work in. And.
You ever want a thrill, let them take you down even one of those pump stations. You'll have a greater appreciation for our sewer department.
Absolutely.
Just one more question. Is it, and I know everything you don't, you see on Facebook, it's untrue. Is it true we was pumping sewage into the, into a ditch?
Gray water. We were trying to keep the solids in there and ADQ was notified and can't wave anything.
Well, I want, well, I mean, I want to clarify that that was gray water.
Brandon does know what he's doing. He's a, he's a good operator and ADQ was very respectful of him. They had already been notified to somebody that had called them and he'd already called them, so.
All right, we'll do it.
All right. Trying to think of anything else on the sewer side. Boys are working hard. I think they're going to look at to make their health, is that right?
Yes. I told him he had to.
I agree.
There's too much for two guys.
And Brandon didn't sleep all weekend. I didn't really pain my heart when I seen some of the comments that he's a good boy. All right. Street Department. We've been working over in Saddle Creek on some of the drainage issues as far as the storm drainage and Park Rock's been doing that. Great work. I'm waiting, or we're waiting on Roger Group and contractor on Church Street. I want to get it finished as bad as anybody else. And trying to figure getting them in here has been fun, but they're telling me nothing's happening.
And it's difficult for them to get paid with that.
It has been, what I understand.
Well, I'm prepared to ask, that's what it's difficult to do now.
We did receive the reimbursement from Arkansas Department of Transportation in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. That was reimbursement on the Church Street credit. So we're doing pretty good on that. Also, like we've moved into Doug Creek today. Trying to get some of those intersections over there, get that ready for what we hopefully will pay you next year depending on our funds over there. Also, on the street side, I, we've had a hard time. We had a company last year working on our drainage ditches. And we found a company this year, R. Roadside Consulting LLC out of Hot Springs. They do foster county work and do the city of Fort Smith, several other areas. And they're pretty good vegetation management on drainage ditches. They've come highly recommended. I have a quote here for twenty-five thousand, which we did do another free fund to work on drainage ditches here.
Will that take care of all of the problems?
That should take care of the problems as far as vegetation.
Sound for?
Do you need your motion suspended or is there a budget to that?
It's budgeted, it's going on approval, that'd be fine.
Could I have that amount, if I please?
Twenty-five thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve you to suspend that.
All right. Have a second?
Second.
Have motion to second. Spend twenty-five thousand with Roadside Consulting LLC out of Hot Springs for twenty-five thousand for drainage ditch management. All those in favor receiving the motion, aye?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Thank you.
One question, Mr. Mayor, while we're on these updates. Are all of the, I've had several people reaching out to me about this. Are all of the storm warning sirens in repair now or?
Uh, no, they're in a state of being repaired. Jimmy, do you remember the last update we had on them?
We ordered some parts for the one oh four, not all of it went away.
We got a ton of problems last.
Is that the only one that's currently down in North Carolina?
That's mine.
North Carolina's still.
They are working on it.
Thank you.
All right, Parks and Rec?
Fall baseball, fall softball sign up ended last Friday. Coach has been selected. Team got formed this week. We had over a hundred kids sign up at the fall hall. Working on budgets for the Fair Innovation softball complex. I want to try to get that going next council meeting. The playground equipment for the softball complex and the Remember's Park is going to be shipped in September. I met with the rep from the playground equipment company at both parks last Thursday. We're just doing dirt work and elevations. Park would manage to go as it is. Softball complex is going to need a little bit of dirt work. And I've discussed that with the street department. We're going to, we're going to get together and work together and get that ready to go before the, before the equipment is delivered.
And, and both are ADA compliant and here on my notes, it's ground level active. Thought that was the big thing. And while you're there, I had made him aware of the, what, where this is. Well, the school had reached out to me. It had been some years back. James may have helped you on this. I guess we originally put the tennis courts in or have to get the brands for the tennis courts. It was cool.
Sure.
They're going to resurface those. They're going to go ahead and do it. Our park would be twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. And feel like at this time, we'll reach out and put that in budget for twenty twenty-five. First, park, we're down. So does anybody have any problem, we'll put that in budget. We go forward and get that. And it's supposed to be a really good service.
Are they redoing it in twenty twenty-five?
They're going to go ahead and redo it and we'll reimburse them for our budget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any questions? You're getting that again?
I guess.
All right. Real quick on the last of, someone did comment. City Hall will be closed on Monday, September second for Labor Day. We will be closed September second for Labor Day. And as usual, we want to keep the citizens informed on things going on with the city. Everything is always open up here. You can come up here anytime and look at anything you want. Look at something else. It's always open and transparent. The City of Bologna has an app and you can find it with Connect Bologna at the Apple or Android app stores. This will allow you to receive notifications on your phone from the city. All right. Public comment? Done. Announcements. Department recognition by Councilwoman. Let's go past the thing.
Thank you, sir. So I just want to take a second to recognize the court department here. Ms. Sherry Lee has worked with the court department since nineteen ninety-six and she's a huge asset. Trish helps her with that and I'm sure other people in city hall helps her also. But I just want to take the time to say thank you to Ms. Sherry Lee for the dedication that she's had and what an asset she is to us as a city.
Great. And that's a, that's a job. Some of those folks will come later in the morning.
They're not exactly on their best day.
They're not exactly happy about being there. All right, chamber of Congress?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with y'all tonight. The monthly lunches are open to the public, both to the members and the non-members. This is a great way to network and enjoy a delicious meal.
I'm just looking for some thought.
We get a discount break at the buffet, which includes a drink for eight seventy-five. Upcoming guest speakers is Jackie Faltz with Bologna Rowatee, John Dean with Think Coffee. Anybody who'd like to be a guest speaker, you can contact the chamber from your calendar. Fall Fest is coming up. It's Saturday, October the twelfth, from ten to three at the Bedlands Museum. Books are twenty-five for members, thirty-five for non-members. There'll be more details coming up and as already, some of this already been posted on our Facebook page. We will have live music, arts and crafts booths and food and drinks. This is open to the public and we appreciate everyone to attend and it's great to attend. Now, remember we will be looking to add new board members to the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six year. If you know anybody that's interested, please come in and contact one of the board members and we will give them some information. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bologna Community Development Corporation, Chad Ern.
Good evening. I'm Chad Ern with the Bologna Community Development Corporation. Want to give you guys a quick update on our organization. We have our website all fleshed out. I encourage you to go check that out, developbologna.org. Our board members are, have a listing there. Our members, our community directory, the work we've been doing with the community catalyst program. Our events calendar is out there. I'm going to give you a couple of updates on those events. We just had our sixtieth member join the Bologna Community Development Corporation. Again, our focus is on community and economic development, so please go check that out. Coming up, something we announced last week. Real quick, real quick before I mention that. The VCDC had a Bologna teacher fair, business fair, last Tuesday at the Bologna High School Gymnasium. We had nearly thirty local businesses show up and set up tables for our wonderful teachers. We had, I'm going to do a preacher count here and say it was nearly four hundred faculty and staff and administrators. Definitely over, definitely over three hundred, between three hundred and four hundred, we'll say that. It was a great event, fed lunch and then they had an opportunity to go through and see all of the local businesses. Those were free for our members and we signed folks up. If they weren't a member, just, you know, membership was a hundred dollars and then they got a table in there and remember through twenty twenty-four. So it was a great event. A lot of good positive feedback on that event. I think it had been five years since that event had happened for our great Bologna school district. So we were very happy and pleased with that. We only had about, I don't know, six or seven weeks to plan that. And so I'm really excited for what we can do next year with more lead time and more opportunity and time to plan on that. We did have representatives from the Bologna area Chamber of Commerce, Lions Club, Army National Guard was there. And again, I think twenty-seven, twenty-eight businesses were there. So a great turnout. Everyone was very pleased and excited with that event. On that same day, we also announced that we are bringing back Eagle Fest. Mark your calendars, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-five. This is twenty-four. May seventeenth, we're in the early stages of planning that. But we did share it on, on Facebook. We had a logo developed to try and make that kind of an official new event or bringing back an event. I think twenty thirteen was the last time we had an Eagle Fest. So really our, our intent with this festival is to highlight our, our community and our resilience and what we've gone through in the last ten years, even since that last Eagle Fest. We're going to try and bring some tiebacks from those previous festivals, people that attended. We've already got a local celebrity that might, hopefully will, will attend. I don't want to hype it up too much. We did have almost six thousand people view that announcement post. So we were very excited with the traction that we've already got. It seems like a lot has happened there. So we'll, we'll continue to bring out updates on Eagle Fest twenty twenty-five very soon. Any questions for me?
On that Eagle Fest?
Yes, sir.
I used to help with that all the time when I did. And I bet so many people commented to me about why we don't have.
Yes, sir.
So this is a very good thing.
Yeah, and it's going to be a community-wide planned event. We're going to bring it. It's not going to just be VCDC. We're going to be bringing back everybody to try and help. We're going to be calling back the folks that were involved last time. Again, there's some information on the way about previous events, but we're going to be relying on our, our community members to help us through the places.
Bring Carrie Underwood in, please.
Carrie Underwood has gotten a lot bigger since. So that is not, yes, celebrity, but we'll.
She looks like.
What's your? You're not the first person that's mentioned her.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Old business? All right. New business ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one. Amending ordinance twenty sixteen dash two. Interesting. When they get them in reading.
Yeah.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one. An ordinance, amending ordinance twenty sixteen dash two. Whereas the zoning ordinance and map have been in effect since January nineteenth, twenty sixteen, have been revised as needed since that time. And whereas the Bologna Planning Commission sees the need to update the zoning ordinance at this time. And whereas the proposed zoning changes were made available for public review and comment. And whereas following a public hearing on the proposed changes on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the Bologna Planning Commission approved the changes represented and recommended their adoption by the city council. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Bologna, Arkansas. Section one, amend section five dot two dot three dot one. Highway mixed use to move mini storage buildings from permitted uses to conditional usage. Section two, amending, amend zoning ordinance to replace all occurrence of mini storage buildings with a broader and more accurate self-storage facility. Section three, amend section two point two to include the following definitions. Self-storage facility with outdoor access for storage and facility providing individual private storage spaces and of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time within a completely enclosed building or building without any outdoor access to individual units or outdoor storage yards. Self-storage facility with outdoor access, indoor storage and building or buildings providing individual private storage spaces of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time with the outdoor access to individual units and/or outdoor storage yards for large items equipped with vehicles. Section four, all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict with discretion are hereby repealed to the extent they are in conflict.
Heard a first reading of that. So I have a question in second, I guess, on the first reading or just presented for the first?
Just presented unless somebody wants to wave the second and third, but.
I don't see that.
Up to somebody wanting that motion, you know, if they're rushing it.
I'd be glad to.
But I can tell you about it if you want, man. So it was, Planning Commission saw a need to move that to the conditional use. And they talked about that in their last meeting. So Trey White, the commissioner, got with me and some of the planning commissioners. And I drafted it up for him and he reviewed it, went over a few times and presented it to the planning commission. They all liked the idea. What it does, it moves it again from committed use to conditional. It defines, or it changes the name from mini storage to self-storage facility, which goes in line with UDO. Since that's what they're trying to move towards is getting the UDO presented and ready for us in the next year or so. And then that also adds in the definitions of what they are because it's very, they, in our current zoning of what mini storage units are outdoor storage. So they wanted to add that in there.
It's my understanding that this has been very well received.
Yeah.
Everybody's on board.
The planning mission's been talking about what it is for a few months now. I think it's six months probably, I think, it's been on the topic of my prior.
We'll have a second reading in September. Third reading. Give everybody plenty of time. If you want to look at this, it'll be on the city website.
If you've got questions, reach out to your planning commissioner, the mayor, the one that headed this up. I just drafted the ordinance form.
All right. And the first reading. Any questions? All right. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash five, city council code of conduct. Yeah.
Sorry. Resolution twenty twenty-four, following establishing a city council code of conduct. Whereas the city council of Bologna desires to adopt a code of conduct as a guide for its members, now therefore be it moved off by the city council of the city of Bologna to adopt the attached document entitled city council code of conduct.
Make a vote for your approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash five.
Going to read the entire motion on the entire resolution? There was no motion to read by title, only?
Do you want me to read the other few?
I think with the. Well, I see what I figured it being an important document under.
Reading, so what, what does the majority want to do on that?
Nobody has made a motion to suspend the reading. I'm willing to suspend the reading. I'm saying.
Motion to second to suspend the reading of resolution twenty twenty-four dash five. All those in favor receiving the motion, aye?
Aye.
Both?
No.
All right. Right now, we'll need a, get a motion for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash five. Maybe it's a second, I guess, we'll wind the discussion. Second. Stand on the table, be open for discussion. Yeah.
Well, I guess what the only thing I want to say about this. First of all, this is recommended by the municipal league. And based upon situations that have occurred really for some time now, I feel as though the city council should have this code of conduct to conduct ourselves. And that's what this is for, to make sure that we are conducting ourselves with integrity. And I just really don't believe that's happening now. But again, I didn't make this up from the, from the municipal league. And I'm hoping that some of these things that are going on in the city and one of them could be like that, what we just mentioned about the sewer of all the years. Why put that stuff in the, on, on, what, what the comedian called the, the, the huge white face? Putting it on all the social medias. I've, I've always believed and been taught, if you got a problem with somebody, you go talk to them. You don't put it on Facebook. You go talk to them. And I know there's been some accusations about illegal things going on. I have said for three years now and I've told people that, that talk to me about it or implied this was going on. If you've got some proof that there's something illegal going on in this city, bring it to me. I will help you research it and figure out, in fact, what is in fact going on. If you don't feel comfortable coming to me, take it to our chief police. Let him investigate it. If you're not comfortable with that, take it to the prosecuting attorney. But get it off of Facebook. You don't need to be on Facebook. All we're doing is degrading Bologna and what people think about Bologna when they read that trash. So that was my concern and why I recommend that this be approved. Thank you.
Senator County, you have a comment there, Mr. Mayor? So first of all, Joe, you realize that, I've read this document about four times. It says nothing in here about social media, which is appealing with public meetings. And I want to say this. I think this is a great document. I, and I, I fully intend to use my legislative authority to pass this tonight as, as a, a part of this thought. I will vote for this if that's the will of the body to have. So I have no problem with anything sitting here. Some great stuff in here. For instance, when somebody's up speaking, we're going to be there paying attention to them. Not going to have our head down and beating our fist on the table or whatever. I think that's good stuff. We don't want any council members out here lying and telling stuff that's not true. Spreading rumors and all of that stuff. That's not appropriate. But one thing that I do want to bring up, and like I said, I intend to vote for this tonight. In its current form, the way it's written, I have no problem voting for it. But what is the ramifications if the, if these rules are not followed? Let me throw a little example up here. Let's say that there's a member of this body that's speaking to an issue such as I am right now. And another member of this body rolls their eyes, laughs in mockery, mumbles words under their breath, interrupts a speaker. I've been guilty of that myself, but. But what is the ramifications of that? Do we fine them? Are we going to censor them like they do in the senate? And the, and the House of Representatives? Are we going to put them in jail? You can't remove them from office without going through a whole whipping of, um, of, uh. Procedures. I did read the details in here. I do see over here where there's a, uh, statement here. That says the municipality will not condone activities that are in violation of the principle of appropriate conduct, but what's the city going to do about it? So for example, if, I mean, if Joe, if there's users as an example, he gets mad at me, boom, 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 like that at me. And it hurts my feelings because there's a line in here that says we all want to, we, you know, the city council members won't be, um, hurting other feelings of other city council members. Um, I mean, what's going to be done with it? What do we do with Joe? Bring him up here and spank him? I, 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 I know that sounds ridiculous, but it's, it's a good, good question. If there's no reason to the document, what's the point of it?
I think if we're all adults, you know, we know when we're doing something shouldn't be doing. I, I think maybe to make us more aware of our reaction to the public, to each other. Uh, I, I think that's the purpose of this. And I think if we think this, maybe you ought to read this. I'm, I'm going to read this probably once a week. I mean, because I have a pretty good booker. I know that. But I think as adults and as gentlemen, as people, uh, that this community respected us enough to put us in this position. I think we ought to be able to think this is a guideline and I think we ought to be in free and gentle respect, treat everybody else who's right.
Also want to point out a few other things. First of all, that something was brought up about the sewer. That was not anybody from this council that put that out there.
I'm sure.
Okay, I just want you to know that. Um, secondly, my, my only other thing, and I don't mind voting on this within my legislative capacity to do so. However, there is a signature page back here where you're asking me to, and among other council members, I'm using myself because that's all I've been worried about on this particular. Thing that I'm fixing to state. You're asking me to step out of my legislative capacity and now sign a contract, sign an affirmation statement. And so I would like the record to reflect, although I am willing to vote for this tonight, to pass this as a part of this legislative body. Um, if you're wanting me to sign this document, I need thirty days to consult with my personal attorney. If I don't, as a rule of thumb, I don't sign documents without my, uh, attorney's advice. Is that fair to the council?
Strictly up to you. I myself, when I got this written, read it and on the back page where my name is, mine is already signed.
I mean, y'all can do it.
That I will, that I will abide by the rules of conduct. And you're right, there's nothing punitive in here. If we want to do that, then we have to get into legislative procedures. We have to get the city attorney involved to find out what we can do. Can we find a guy? Yeah, I know we can't remove him from office. We have to go through the recall procedure. But I would think as ladies and gentlemen, that we should be able to abide by these rules. Without having to say, well, if you know, then I'm going to walk outside in the face. Come, that's not, we don't have to do that.
Why don't we just go ahead and, and talk about the elephant in the room? Who, who is telling lies, Joe?
I think most of it is innuendos and accusations.
Who in this council is telling lies?
As I just said, if you've got proof, lay it out there.
It's been laid out.
Let's get around them. No one has it. It's been laid out in Facebook.
Um.
Turn it over to the prosecuting attorney then.
We'll do, we'll do that.
Put that stuff on there.
We'll do that.
Okay.
I'll do that. I'll, I'll send a letter off tomorrow.
Do it. Let's get this thing done.
I move it's approval.
So I've already moved it's approval.
A second.
Well, dang, I'm second comment. Um. As far as the teeth to the document, I don't think there needs to be. I think it's more of an ethical obligation you're giving this council, uh, when you agree to it. Um, second, on the signature page, if you look at the municipal league's, uh, version of it, their example. It does show a signature page with councilperson, councilperson, councilperson. Um, so if it says that, I know the municipal league attorneys have reviewed it and they agree with it, uh, but I understand you want your own opinion. So. Third, with this being a resolution, historically, Joe, you know, resolutions we run January first to December thirty first. Is this something you're going to want to bring up every year as a continued resolution?
I understand that this, that it's suggested that this be read, uh, in a work session or something. So that all council members are reminded of this at the beginning of every year.
Okay.
At least that one.
And, um, uh, then with that, I want to, since Mr. Matos is concerned about having his attorney. Uh, I would amend your motion to approve it with the signatures within forty-five days. Are you good with that, Mr. Matos?
I'm good with that. I'd second that amendment.
I'm going to sign it by the night.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to sign it.
I, well, we could just leave it to the person. I mean, there, there's no law that says anybody has to sign anything, so just leave it to the, to the. I, I just want the record to reflect. I need some time to consult with my personal attorney and respectfully to the municipal league attorneys. They represent the city and the city as a whole. They don't represent any person. So I just want to ensure when I put my John Hancock on something, I understand fully what I'm signing.
I understand that.
And, and also want to say that the first amendment of the constitution of the United States. Is and has been a very important issue to my heart. And political speech is one item that the Supreme Court has consistently upheld in this country. And I just want to ensure that we're not trying to censor members of this body or members of the public for. Stating their grievances on any platform that they want to do that, whether it's here in the city council, whether it's on social media, whether it's out here on the street corner. I want to ensure that those rights are not being infringed on. I don't see that in the document, so I'm not saying that that's in the document, otherwise I wouldn't be voting for it tonight. I just want this council to be clear that what's in this document and everybody's disdain and upset about Facebook is two total different things.
So with that being said.
And that's.
Are, are you aware to, if councilwoman Bean gets, I'm going to use an example because you're sitting next to me. She gets on Facebook and makes a comment. I cannot, whether true or false, as another councilwoman, I cannot reply to that comment. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's not, it's not.
About what you're for you.
But it's not.
We're talking about business that can be discussed and stuff like that. So just be aware when things are put out there that you need to make sure everything.
I'm willing to come here and have a meeting anytime. We need you to talk about any issues we need to talk about.
Whether or not.
And I was willing to, two weeks ago, and everybody thought it was, it was.
I was.
That we needed to wait for two weeks, for whatever reason. I know everybody's busy. That's fine with me. We still haven't, we still haven't been to discuss the things that I brought out on Facebook. And it, it, it just appears to me that we're still wanting to stir it around the real issue, the real elephant in the room that needs to be addressed. I'm for code of conduct. I respect every one of you. Believe it or not, I respect you. I try to be respectful in these meetings. I try to be respectful to our guests and our community members when they come here to speak. In fact, I'm, I've been one of the ones that was a proponent of opening the floor for the public to come and speak and make that a part of the agenda. We voted for that. Um, so I am for that. Um, but. I do use social media as a way to inform my constituents of what's going on in the city. Uh, I do not use that in the capacity of speaking on behalf of the city of Bologna or on the, uh, speaking in a, in any official capacity. It's political rhetoric. That is protected by the first amendment.
Okay, I understand.
Uh, there's no council member on this, on this chair up here that I know of that has spread any false information. And do you have any? As Joe said, show the proof. What, what lies have been told?
Do you have?
I have, I have a stat load.
I think we ought to have a work session to go through his stat.
No, the work session's over, Joe. I'm going to send it to the prosecuting attorney as I was advised to by the state. So that's, that's a done doc, that's a done discussion.
All this discussion that we're having now.
It's a needed discussion.
And shows that this is needed. If we would have had this in place. The last three years, I'm going to say three years, I can't do that. There have been at least eighteen violations of the code of conduct. By council members. And I'm not saying dispute, okay?
Now, when you say council members, do you mean?
A various council members.
Do you mean the entire, the, the entire seven people that's sitting up here, the eight people? Or are you just talking about the six of us that are council?
The six of us.
Well, because, because there's, there's documents in here to, that concerns.
There are not in about the mayor here.
Because I remember when the, when, I remember when we had a discussion here. And all of the people here was from the community coming out to speak on the crypto mine. And people was upset at respectfully Mr. Mayor because he had his head down and wouldn't look up at people. And, you know, was that respectful?
I did too, and someone else taking notes.
But was that respectful though? The whole shebang was disrespectful. I agree with you, Joe, that's disrespectful. It's disrespectful when a member of this council is speaking to an issue and. There's another person on this body that's rolling their eyes and laughing, ha, ha, ha. And I've got video of that. And that's the stuff you don't like for me putting out on Facebook, but it, you know, the world needs to, needs to see what's really going on.
And any further discussion?
No, we have two motions on the table though.
I have, I have.
We have to vote on the second motion first.
Correct, uh, signatures with, to pass or if it passes to have signatures within forty-five days is my amended motion.
So we have an amended motion to pass resolution twenty twenty four dash five. And the amendment on that would be that the members have forty-five days to sign.
A copy in the county office.
Uh, we've got to talk to the, to the, to the amendment here. Do, so.
That is the amendment.
So yes, that's the amendment. We need, we, we need to have some clarity here. So the members have forty-five days to sign. What if a member doesn't want some?
Then don't sign. Uh, just being respectful that you have it done within forty-five days.
Re, what was that?
You're being respectful that you, you would Kelly get it signed with.
You're giving, you're giving the forty-five days. If my attorney advised they not to sign it, I won't.
Then don't sign it. That's fine.
It has nothing to do with respect.
No, but I was just trying to give you an option of not having to sign it tonight.
Now, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I have the, and the motion is second for resolution twenty twenty four dash five is amended. That the council will sign it in forty-five days. In forty-five days that they wish to sign. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Now, the main, the motion is passive.
Now, now we're on the motion passive?
Yes.
All right, one final thing about the motion, uh, to pass it. Any question? I'm supposed to. Carry on.
Uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor to pass resolution.
Oh, I remember what it was. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I do apologize. Okay. We put this in motion tonight. That we're, this is election here. So there's at least three of these members on this council to change. Myself included. Is this going to just be a, just a dead in the water issue? Are we going to keep carrying this on every year?
That's why I said it's recommended that in January of each year, when the councilperson re-designs.
It's recommended, but, so I'm going to amend, I'm going to amend the motion. I'm going to amend the motion that this document is reaffirmed by all council members. If that it's read and re-voted on by all council members annually.
I don't know, if it would be a resolution, I don't know if you can, because they're only good.
We have that other resolution.
Yeah, but we redo it every year. Does that make sense? It's like.
But we, but we make a motion to redo it every year. We may, it's in the document.
No, I just read, submit it every year. I just asked Mr. Kelly to resubmit it. So the same with this one. If Mr. Maxwell would like to resubmit it next year, he can, January first.
Okay, I made a motion, so I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to that, to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash five. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, stand approved. Proclamation for constitutional.
Yeah, we're going to have a copy of this in Kelly's office and we'll all get it signed.
Correct, that's my understanding. I had it with us. That's correct. I have.
Proclamation, whereas the constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of long good service in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the framing of the constitution of the United States of America. By the constitutional convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord the jurisdiction to this magnificent document. And its memorable anniversary and to patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public wall nine, nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the president of the United States of America. Designating September seventeen through the twenty-third as constitution week. Now therefore I press in the reference. Reference fraud and by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Bologna, in the city of Bologna, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through September twenty-third as constitution week.
All right, so I will make sure that that gets sent out. We do that every year, I guess, even when we were here, so we all want to honor our constitution. Um, all right, so the last thing on the agenda, um, we had a pretty good rain event. Um. It did that day. Um, we did, um, we were seventy-six inches in about two hours. Um, I think our drainage structures were admirable. And if you're in the fire service or the, uh, police service or the public service. It's, uh, state of helping me on this is life and property. And, uh, we didn't have any homes reported with any, uh, water damage. And, uh, I think, you know, the flood control has been a big issue even when Mayor Firestone was there. Uh, we figured it out the other day and we probably spent about six million in different grant funds and everything to address concerns. Uh, we're working on these digits tonight. We're deeply concerned. We care about everybody's problems and we're going to try to solve them as best we can. Uh, understanding that the Lord, one of these days will send a rain event. That might be a crippling event. Uh, I happened over in Florida, I guess, with, oh, that our, and they had me a few ways back, but they got twenty, thirty inch of rain. Uh, but I had met with the city engineer, uh, I've asked, uh, Mr. Firestone to help me. He has years of experience as a port authority, he's been dealing with wetland issues. He's already been helpful, give me some good ideas. Uh, Matt Rush, uh, Mr. Firestone gave me some good ideas with the highway department. Uh, and we are definitely concerned and working, definitely working on this issue. Uh, and people know we care about their concerns. And anybody says we don't care if that's their dishes are concerned is wrong. And, uh, as is evidenced tonight, all around, drive to the, with the control management. Uh, it's, uh. It's been quite a job to try to kick these ditches and stuff on him and claim it out. And, uh, but we are very concerned and we're working on it.
Well, that's one of the things that we started back years ago, was cleaning the drainage out with sound, you know, so the water would come on, uh, and, and runoff. The problem we have, this is something I had great thoughts, I mean, it was sitting in here. We went to, it took, you know, the area.
Still using them.
And, uh, and the problem we have, since it's flat, you don't have a lot of runoff. And when you get five or six inches at a time, it's going to build up and it's going to fill the ditches and it's going to get on the roads and stuff, but, uh.
There, there's six foot of haul, six foot of ball in one city hall and, and that.
Really, I don't know. It just takes a while to runoff.
So we're, we're definitely taking a look at it and I've asked these team members, so I've seen Trey Foster and, uh, Mr. Firestone, Matt Russ. Uh, Matt's an asset to the city, uh, and we're definitely working on it and looking at it. We're very concerned about it. But, uh. Like I said, it's, it's very helpful to us if you send this stuff in either phone call or email. Uh, we don't check social media and, uh, so the best way to, to get stuff done is just to email us or give us a phone call. And we'll continue to look at it. I guess with that being said, after tonight's meeting, like I've said many a time, everything's open here. And look forward to anybody coming by, this document, anything else they need, that what appears to be. If I had anything else.
I hope we're there.
Hold up, I got a question for you. Since this was brought up by a work session by Mr. Maxwell, I would like to entertain that if y'all would, if you make it for next council meeting. Sometimes you discuss some of these things.
What are we going to discuss?
Well, wherever you have a one that you brought up, you said you want to lay it out there, the elephant in the room. I thought we discussed it prior to the work session.
It could have been.
And then also I'd like to discuss some budget proposal ideas, maybe for next year's budget as well, some ideas and stuff.
Yeah.
But that's up to the whole council. They'd like to. But that's up to the whole council, they'd like to.
Yeah, I, I just made it better.
When we do it before the next council meeting, that's, Tuesday night, if y'all want, that's up to y'all.
You sign on on September ten?
I would like to have, I would like to have a list of topics that we're going to discuss. I know.
Well, you've got a pack of something.
Do you want me to create the?
No, no, I've said your packet of stuff you want to discuss.
Okay.
Would be one, one item and the other would be a budget, budget item. If everybody's good on that. If you don't want to discuss it, wouldn't you take off the budget?
There, I've, you know, there's really, I'm going to, the, there is some items I would like to discuss. As far as the fireworks show go, I'm, I, there's no more discussion need to be had on that.
Okay.
I heard tonight exactly what I needed to do, and that's what I'm going to do.
Okay, so you should.
But there's really no need for us to discuss that any further.
Okay, so.
And I would like to discuss why this city is spending nineteen thousand dollars on a private on the ground, sent that in emails, I have not gotten responses back. But I do think that's something we can discuss as a whole. And if we're going to have budget talks, that's something that needs to go into our budget discussion.
Then we'll just consider.
I implore starting to have budget discussions now. I think that's very why.
When y'all like to make September third?
I mean, if y'all want to keep it on some nice.
I can't, I can't do September the third, but I'm free any other Tuesday night after that.
September ten is the Tuesday before.
Yeah.
September ten?
September ten, before Congress is reminded.
Six o'clock?
To discuss budgeting for twenty twenty-five.
September ten, six o'clock? Any other discussion on any way? Uh? Stand guard?